I know people in the audience have been as well, so we're gonna take five minutes. Please be back in about five. Thanks. All right, we'll call, we'll call to order this city council special meeting CIP update series agenda for Monday, December the 11th, 2023 at four o'clock PM. Madam Secretary, I'll certify we have a quorum present as all members are present with the exception of member Cam Carr, who did text me, he's on his way, he'll be here about 20 minutes late. With that, we'll move to citizens comments. Did we receive any comments? Having done, we'll move forward to new business, one capital improvement program, CIP update series, water and wastewater. With that, Trent, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be our final installation of our CIP update series for 2023, and this one is all about Pearland Water. So, we're gonna take you from production to delivery, collection of wastewater and treatment of that and returning it back to nature. Tonight, we're gonna hear from many of our experts and key folks that will walk us through not only the CIP, but also the operations that go into the daily process of delivering water and treating wastewater, and then also, of course, all the CIP upcoming and completed CIP projects. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Lorenzo Wengate.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today's presentation, as Trent mentioned, will be the final installment of the 2023 CIP update series, and it'll provide updates on water and wastewater related projects. Tonight, we'll cover our future with a purpose, goals, current and future transitioning of water and wastewater systems, as well as some of our project milestones. The City of Pearland wants to ensure that our approach to capital, to the capital improvement plan is a holistic one, and to do this, we leverage various planning documents to assess the capacity of our existing infrastructure and forecast future needs within the community. The capital improvement plan and its incorporation into the annual budget is a derivative of planning the city's future with a purpose. The creation of the five-year CIP is an in-depth, year-long process involving every department within the city. The 24 through 28 CIP was finalized September 11th, 2023, and the planning process for FY25 CIP was initiated in October of 2023. We're currently in the first of four quarters of the CIP planning process, wherein user groups submit project requests for consideration by the Capital Projects Department to be included in the city's plan for the next five years. In subsequent phases, staff will review project scopes and verify funding options prior to presenting the proposed CIP to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately to council for consideration and adoption. This water and wastewater update will be the final presentation, CIP presentation for this calendar year, and the CIP update series will resume in March of 2024 with updates on transportation and drainage-related projects, followed by the CIP workshop related to the proposed FY25 budget. And at this, at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to David Sands and Pearland Water for more detailed updates on water and wastewater-related projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I'd like to first thank you for your time and allowing, allowing us to, to discuss with you and share our plans for, for our strategy for continued improvement of our water and wastewater infrastructure. To kick off her, to kick off our introduction to Pearland Water, I'd like to share with you the goals that we're focusing on in FY24. Using the risk and likelihood matrix to weigh the likelihood and consequence to determine risk, Pearland Water established five key priorities to focus on in FY24. The first two listed, staff safety and asset reliability, are addressed across Pearland Water collectively. I will highlight those first two on the next two slides, but the remaining three, system capacity, regulatory requirements, and managed costs are addressed specifically by each division and will be discussed in the divisional slides later on in the presentation. We are actively recruiting for a safety professional that is knowledgeable in utility operations fieldwork. Once selected, this individual will develop and put in place systems and processes to create a safe work environment for our Pearland Water staff performing routine and non-routine activities. Thanks to this governing body's approval of the new, of a new position in the FY24 budget, we will be equipped to focus on unique issues that Pearland Water staff face every day, establish metrics for leading indicators, and foster a strong safety culture throughout the department. We look forward to significant reductions in, in risk in the safety of our staff. The second bullet was reliability and sustainability or asset reliability. We, we chose this to, to focus on minimizing risk, ensuring sound decision-making, and ensure the limited resources that we have are laser-focused where they can have the most impact. An asset reliability leader charged with authority, responsibility, and accountability for effective utilization of City of Pearland tools, including the computerized maintenance management system, CityWorks. We'll also be, be focusing on asset condition monitoring and resource, resource deployment, again, maximizing the limited resources that we have. The new alignment will provide Pearland Water with necessary structure to provide a world-class asset reliability system. We are engaging with industry experts to help us launch the new asset reliability process. They will focus on developing staff skillsets in leveraging current systems, resulting in reliable and accurate data to better inform decisions for both maintenance and CIP. It will also develop staff skillsets for effective condition assessments, so we can monitor all critical assets. We are planning for significant advancements in elevating our maintenance teams in FY24 to move beyond even predictive maintenance through deploying predictive maintenance activities. Before handing the presentation over to Pearland Water team, I want to introduce two members of our leadership team here today, tonight, that will not be presenting. Ms. Lori Rodriguez. Ah, there you are. Lori leads our Environmental Services Division, focusing on industrial pretreatment, fog, of, what's it, IPP, and backflow prevention, as well as regulatory compliance issues, which is another focus that we're, that we laid out and identified as a pre, a, a key priority for FY24. And Ms. Yvette Conneby? Yvette leads the Administrative Services Division for Utilities. We're really glad to have her onboard, full-time, supporting utilities. With that, I'm pleased to introduce the newest member of Pearland Water, Pearland Waters Leadership Team, Assistant Director, Zach Lilly, who will lead us into the divisional section, sections of today's presentation. Zach?
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Thank you, David. Our focus today is to provide meaningful information in support of this year's capital improvement plan. The three prime delivery functions of Pearland Water are water production, which provides adequate supply and treatment that exceeds regulatory standards set by EPA and TCEQ, distribution and collection, which provides first-class customer service for water delivery and wastewater collection, and finally wastewater treatment of customers' domestic waste stream for safe discharge back to the environment. Beginning with the water production division, we will discuss efforts to address capacity needs, regulatory requirements, and cost management. Our water production manages a daily supply of wholesale purchased groundwater and a surface water supply in the near future. A diverse supply will continue to ensure the City of Pearland can meet demand into the future and also remain resilient through events like the ongoing 2023 drought. City of Pearland Water staff are present 24/7, 365 days a year to manage the system's O&amp;M and regulatory requirements. Our system is unique with three different water sources. Our groundwater is withdrawn from the Gulf Coast Aquifer. Our two purchased water sites receive water from the Trinity River Basin by way of the City of Houston, and the Brazos River Basin feeds the newly constructed surface water plant. There are storage tanks, pump stations, and pipeline systems through our, throughout our city limits to deliver water to customers. As seasons change, so does the demand for water by our customers. In the heat of the summer, demands on the system can easily double with peak demand days almost tripling that of winter demand. In 2023, our peak demand day was August 28th, when demand reached an all-time record of 28 and a half million gallons. Once demand is identified, an assessment of supply comes next. Supply from well sources must be analyzed by capacity and yield. While peak demand can be satisfied using capacity, yield factors in required rest time for the aquifer recovery. Supply must also be assessed by service area. While Pearland currently operates on a single pressure zone, our ability to transfer water east from west or west from east are limited. We are currently evaluating the viability of retaining the option water purchased in 2006. The intent of the additional supply would be to increase the volume of raw river water to the Pearland Surface Water Treatment Plant, expanding the plant capacity from 10 million gallons to 20 million gallons per day. Let's take a closer look at supply. Full accounting of the available water supply sources is shown in this graphic. Our city has two reliable sources of water, which we define as groundwater and purchased water. The city's current 10 groundwater wells can produce 17.3 million gallons per day. These wells pump from the Gulf Coast Aquifer, which is comprised of three smaller aquifers. Water quality in the Gulf Coast Aquifer is generally high and requires minimal treatment prior to distribution. Our water from the Trinity River conveyed by the Coastal Water Authority and delivers to the City of Pearland, ready for final disinfection and distribution to our customers. Our soon-to-be-activated third source is the new surface water treatment plant that will provide an additional 10 million gallons a day, which is supplied by the GCWA Canal System from the Brazos River. While best practices will never run groundwater wells at 100% capacity for an extended period of time, for peak day demand, Pearland has a combined water supply capacity, including the new surface water treatment plant of 43.3 million gallons a day. With demand and supply identified, an assessment of storage capacity must be made. The purpose of water storage is to provide a reserve supply of water during peak demands. It also provides a reserve of water during outages, emergencies, and firefighting, and provides additional detention time for disinfection. Pearland has 15 groundwater storage tanks with a capacity of 18.9 million gallons and six elevated water storage tanks with a capacity of 4.5 million gallons. The city is projected to add an additional 3 million gallons in storage. The future 3 million gallon storage depicted here are ground storage tanks at the Kirby and Surface Water Plants. We are currently evaluating the cost-benefit in developing the new storage as elevated tanks. While more expensive to construct, elevated storage reduces the system's dependency on mechanical pressurization and more readily provides a system pressure in the event of a power outage. By reviewing this graphic, you can see that the previous and future CIP has prepared Pearland Water to meet today's demand in years to come. Before I turn it over to Sean, I would like to tell you about the latest CIP project that is near completion. The Bailey Road Rehabilitation CIP to address iron and manganese is almost complete. Iron and manganese occurs naturally in groundwater. Neither element causes health effects at concentrations found in Pearland, but excessive amounts of iron and manganese can stain clothes, discolor plumbing fixtures, and sometimes add a rusty taste and look to the water. Iron and manganese in water also promote the growth of bacteria. By adding aerators, Pearland is using an effective, low-cost solution to oxidize the iron and manganese found naturally occurring at the Bailey Water Plant. The method of aeration can also provide high-efficient removal of gases such as hydrogen sulfide, carbon dioxide, methane, and volatile organic carbons, which results in a better water treatment process performance and improved taste and odor. This project has an expected completion time within the first quarter of 2024. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce Sean Gilmore, our Surface Water Treatment Plan Manager, to discuss the revised rule on lead and copper and provide an update on the Surface Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you, Zach, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to discuss these things with you. The Environmental Protection Agency proposed and adopted revisions to the lead and copper rule, and the new revision strengthened the lead and copper rule to better protect our children, our community by mandating water system owners identify and replace all lead service lines. The new rule requires that all water systems shall inventory and identify any lead service lines by October 16th of 2024. Revisions to this rule also require enhanced testings at schools and daycare facilities. We have engaged a consultant to ensure Pearland Water accomplishes all mandated activities by October 16th, 2024 deadline. This program kicks off in January of 2024. Activities that will be required to follow, sorry, that will be required following the compliance deadline are somewhat fluid, but indication, indication suggests that specific capital improvements will be required, specific capital investments will be required to meet the expected outcomes from the revisions of these regulations. Another regulatory issue challenging many of our Bexarri County neighbors is subsidence, control, and reduction. Due to the foresight of city leadership, Pearland has made tremendous strides to reduce its dependency on groundwater, including the capacity of the new City of Pearland Surface Water Treatment Plant, our all-in capacity of 43.3 million gallons per day is 59% surface water source. With a 95th percentile daily demand for Pearland being approximately 18 million gallons per day, it is possible to decrease the daily groundwater production percentage to less than 20% for the majority of the year. Pearland's new surface water treatment plant has several advantages. It was built to decrease the reliance on hit-or-miss quantities of treated water from the City of Houston during peak demand needs. During our peak-high demands of August this year, Shadow Creek Ranch was only able to provide 4.4 million gallons per day on average over the entire month, with only a maximum of 5.2 million gallons per day for six days out of the 31 days. This is well short of the 6 million gallon allowable, 6 million gallons per day allowable to be purchased by the City of Pearland. Keep in mind that the cost of water received at Shadow Creek Ranch is sold at a higher rate for all water over 1.3 million gallons per day that Pearland takes from Houston, excluding when the City of Houston has enacted their drought contingency plan. The plant will supply a baseload of approximately 6.6 million gallons per day on average during non-peak demand. This baseload eliminates the need for the City of Houston water from Shadow Creek Ranch beyond the minimum take amount and reduces the runtime of Kirby Water Plant during non-peak demand. With the ability to increase production during a peak demand, this plant will also limit the amount of premium added City of Water, City of Houston water taken during peak demand season at Shadow Creek Ranch. Having this comparable quality of water not sourced by wells on both ends of the city allows for more longevity of the 10 current City of Pearland well sites. The surface water plant's added capacity will also help provide supply when city well sites are down for planned rehab, scheduled maintenance, or emergency repairs. Surface Water Treatment Plant was also built with future subsidence regulations in mind. With the two purchased water sites, Alice and Shadow Creek Ranch, and the surface water treatment plant's combined output, the City of Pearland has the ability to provide 21.3 million gallons per day of economical surface water to the citizens of Pearland, representing more than the city's non-peak demand and 75% of the city's peak demand in August of this year. While under drought conditions, the availability of surface water source drinking water keeps the City of Pearland on the leading edge of subsidence mitigation in Bexarri County and is in line with the requirements of subsidence districts in the area. Lastly, the plant was also designed to handle future demand needs of a growing west side. A city-controlled, reliable source of consistent, high-quality water will provide assurance to interested developers in the upper, upper Kirby District and the 288 corridor. A 10 million gallons option of water that Zach mentioned earlier could allow the Pearland to sell water to nearby developments or municipalities and become a possible regional supplier with that added 10 million gallon per day expansion of the current plant. Speaking of the water options in the American Canal, here we show how water from the Brazos River Basin supplies the new surface water treatment plant. The Gulf Coast Water Authority owned and operated Shannon Pump Station pumps water from the Brazos River into Jones Creek near Folscher. Jones Creek then feeds Oyster Creek in Pecan Grove and runs to Sugar Land. From Sugar Land, it's pumped into the American Canal and runs through Missouri City and Fresno on the way to the surface water treatment plant and beyond. An amended, restated system agreement for the current 10 million gallons per day of raw water supplied from the Gulf Coast Water Authority is in discussion. This contract would secure the availability of that current 10 million gallons per day at the surface water treatment plant through 2053. As a recipient of Brazos River water, the City of Pearland has contributed funds to the replacement of the Shannon Pump Station due to damages the pump station suffered in August of 2017 during Harvey. The surface water treatment plant utilizes ultrafiltration membranes along with granular activated carbon. Budget-wise, there is no new money, no owner-directed change orders, and the only remedy for the contractor is time. Because the plant construction was funded through Texas Water Development Board, 95% of the iron and steel used in the project must be produced in the US. This is one restriction that has caused a setback that still has effects today. Waivers from the EPA have been granted to temporarily utilize foreign-made steel check valves in the plant construction until domestic check valves can be procured. Once the American iron and steel check valves are obtained, the contractor will begin replacing the foreign valves. These valves and other fittings are still outstanding a year after the original expected completion date of the plant. The last of the six generators for the plant that was scheduled to be installed in May of 2022 is now scheduled for delivery this week. The electrical switchgear was also delayed eight months during construction. Furthermore, startup testing equipment availability limitations have delayed the project for weeks at a time throughout the membrane startup process. As you can see, there have been many setbacks along the way to completing this project, but we are moving closer to substantial completion of the plant and are steadily bringing on systems to make the plant wholly functional. Testing results of various water treatment stages have been and are currently being accumulated to send to TCEQ for approval. We project providing water into the distribution system by the end of March 2024, due to the expected delays in approval process beyond the normal 60 days, or 60 days to 90 days estimated for review. Just as the resource that we have stewardship over is finite, our financial resources are limited and must be optimized. Therefore, Pearland Water tasks each division that touches the lifecycle of water with maximizing our current resources. Each capital investment is weighed for overall system longevity, as well as long-term O&amp;M cost. One example of this investment is a modern SCADA system. I will turn the presentation back over to Zach to discuss the ongoing SCADA system investment.
Phase one, phase two, and phase three A are complete. Operation and maintenance have been utilizing the system for day-to-day activities. Pearland Water is currently in phase three B, which is focusing on adding 33 list stations throughout the wastewater collection system. SCADA system will provide real-time monitoring benefits for Pearland Water O&amp;M staff. Routine tasks can be automated, such as the opening and closing of a valve. Fault and alarm systems are designed for early detection of problems with critical infrastructure. The monitoring system has increased efficiency of operations by allowing staff to monitor demand across the entire system and helps staff make more informed decision during, decisions during events like this past summer's drought. Another key component of the SCADA system are the historians that collect data to help establish baseline trends for preventative maintenance of assets and regulatory requirements. Overall, the SCADA system plays a critical role in water production, delivery, and wastewater treatment. Now, I will turn this over to David Kent to discuss our distribution and collections division.
Thank you, Zach. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to share some of the highlights related to the distribution and collections division. This team is comprised of several service area This team is comprised of several service areas ranging from water and sewer line repairs, fire hydrant maintenance and replacement, and water tap installation and concrete restoration. As the water production team is responsible for the production of safe drinking water, the distribution team transports that water from the source to the customer via a network of water lines, taps, valves and fire hydrants. Our customers and then use that superior water for their needs and then returns it back to the city in a form of wastewater to which the distribution and collections team receives through the sanitary sewer system within the community via networks of pipes, pumps, manholes to a wastewater reclamation facility to process before returning it back to the waterway. The distribution and collection team consists of forty staff members. There are nine different teams comprised within the division. As the DNC is inspecting and repairing the infrastructure within the right-of-way, the team is tracking all inspections and repairs via the City Works Work Order System and GIS data updates to make recommendations towards CIP projects with valuable information. Currently, the city has an estimated of five hundred and sixty-five miles of water line within the distribution system comprised of five thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine fire hydrants, twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven water valves, and forty thousand two hundred and twenty-six service connections. The distribution and collections team is responsible for the maintenance and operations of this entire network. This slide illustrates the age of water line construction within the community and the highlights the increased age infrastructure near and east of Main Street. This image also does a good job of illustrating the newer infrastructure west of Old Town. Transite pipe is a distribution piping product that was mainly used heavily in the mid nineteen hundreds. The city has approximately eighty miles of transite water line remaining within the distribution network. Plans for the next five years include ten CIP projects that have been identified to replace thirty-nine miles of transite pipe within the system. I should add, the staff continues to audit and inventory the water line construction materials during times of repairs and investigations, so this number of transite line will shift over the next year. While a common construction product in its time, transite pipe has a life expectancy of fifty to seventy years and is extremely susceptible to failure and damages due to softening, brittleness, shifting soils and adjacent construction activities. To put this into perspective, consider all the construction activities that have occurred in our communities since the nineteen fifties. And even more, the recent push of enhanced utilities, communication and wireless technologies that exist within the same right-of-way that these water lines share. Impacted transite water lines are one of the, are one of the leading causes of the major water line leaks and resources lost within the community. Thank you at this time, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jameson Appel.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. My name is Jameson Appel. I'm the Assistant Director of Capital Projects. So I have a few brief slides here to discuss the capital improvement projects related to our water infrastructure, some achievements we've had in the past few years, as well as some projects that are nearing completion and those that are, we're looking to begin throughout the next fiscal year. Here's the five-year CIP for 2024 through 28, and it equates to approximately a hundred and twenty million. So this list is some of our achievements. The city's continuing to progress on our goal of replacing the outdated end-of-life transite pipe throughout the city that Kent just talked about. Some of the recent replacements that we've had are Old Town Site, Canterbury, Heritage Green and the Corrigan neighborhoods. In recent years, the city also added ground storage tank capacity to our water plants, this being the three million tank that was added at Shadow Creek Ranch or the SCR plant, as well as the new one million gallon tank at the Bailey Water Plant. Other completed priorities include replacement of end-of-life valves and infrastructure at several of our plants. Project completions for this year and the first quarter of the calendar year next year include the Surface Water Plant, which was constructed under the CMR delivery process, as well as the Bailey Water Plant improvements. The projects you see on this list here will have design contracts underway or in negotiation by the end of the calendar, calendar year or the first quarter of 2024. The largest being the Creekview Shady Crest neighborhood, as well as the Wood Creek transite water line replacement. Also included here are the Liberty Water Production Facility Rehab, Colen Ground Storage Tank Replacement and the Water Plant Containment Structures, and those are in the early stages through construction or consultant selection or negotiation. Okay, here we have one, one of the projects I just mentioned. This is the Creekview Shady Crest Transite Pipe Project. So as Kent discussed, transite pipe has a line failure rate significantly higher than that of comparable or like-size PVC pipe. So this project will replace the transite infrastructure with PVC. The transite lines are responsible for a higher percentage of work orders per foot than the comparable PVC lines and require greater resources to maintain relative to the PVC. The Creekview and Shady Crest Water Line Replacement will replace approximately five miles of transite infrastructure within the subdivision. And this project also has a drainage and sewer component in addition to the water line. So when we replace that water line, we'll also upset, upsize it with a six-inch or eight-inch PVC and replace the service lines. The project also provides the opportunity to resolve some of the dead-end water line issues in the affected areas and will improve the water quality for the area. And we plan to begin this first quarter of 2024, the design. The current fiscal year twenty-four capital improvement program will have seven upcoming construction contracts for water ranging to, from three hundred and seventy-five K to five point six million. Sherwood Water Line Replacement Project will be going into construction in the fourth quarter of 2024 and will replace seventy-two hundred linear feet of transite water line in coordination with the, the street reconstruction and drainage project. The Westminster Small Diameter Water Line Replacement Project will begin construction in the first quarter of 2024 and will replace the smaller two-inch, four-inch and six-inch lines with the larger eight-inch, twelve-inch diameter lines, all the while looping the system to reduce the dead-end lines, provide service redundancy and adequate fire production to the subdivision. So our McLean Water Protection Facility Rehab Project will be going into construction in the first quarter of 2024, and this entails removing the, removing and replacing the existing booster pumps, adding variable frequency drives or VFDs. The project will also replace all plant piping and valves between the ground storage tank and the plant discharge and replace the generator and enclosure. The fencing around the perimeter of the facility will be replaced and the facility storage room will be updated. There's also a drainage component to get the residual water out of the site. And analyzers, inline analyzers and a flow meter have also been incorporated into the project. So this project was enlisted due to the numerous water line failures that the EPW has experienced over the last several years. Most of the water line infrastructure at the production facilities are original to the facility and they haven't been replaced since the inception. The main goal of this project to the CIP will be to aid in the reduction of service interruptions. The 2018 assessment report identified each plant site and ranked McLean as a priority to address a long with the water model that stated to correctly size the pumps for distribution. Here we have the Green Tea Transite Pipe Replacement. And this, this project will replace approximately seven point three miles of transite water line infrastructure in the Green Tea subdivision. This project alone equates to almost ten percent of the total pipe replacement needed within the city. In addition to the replacement of the transite, all existing two, three and four-inch water lines will be upsized to the six or eight-inch PVC, as well as new service lines and pressure sensors and sampling stations will also be incorporated into the project. So replacing the small diameter pipe with current materials meeting city standard line sizes in coordination with the city's water model is expected to have, provide higher flow capacities for these neighborhoods, resolve the dead-end water line issues resulting in improved water quality, improve fire protection and reduce the water loss due to broken lines. So with that, I will hand it back to Mr. Epperson that completes our presentation for the water portion, so.
Thank you.
Leave it to you, Trent.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate everybody that presented here. Just, I wanted to give a real quick, before we jumped into questions, just a real quick verbal AMI update. We continue to make progress. We've got additional cellular endpoints that are being shipped out mid-December that'll start to go in the ground by the end of the year, first part of next year. We'll have an update memo later this week in your Thursday packet. And then what we have scheduled for January ninth is actually a discussion item on the agenda to do more detailed updates on the progress of the project and then the planned rollout of Water Smart from a, you know, rolling that out to the public from kind of a marketing standpoint, as well as the actual mechanics of, of rolling that out in, in the first part of next year. And Itron will be there as well, so I just want to let you know, continue to make progress, but we're going to have a much more detailed, in-depth discussion on that in January. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions about the water portion of our presentation tonight. Thank you.
All right. Good deal. We'll turn it over to Council for any questions you may have. Start with Mr. Carmon.
Thank you, Mayor. On the new lead and copper issue, I guess we have to, to complete some inspection or testing by October. Any idea on size and scope of potential remediation or future CIP projects coming?
Sure. So I'll, I'll get some help on this answer, but I do know, you know, we've got the, the consultant on board that's helping us with that. The first part of that is basically developing an inventory of service connections that fall before a particular date in the eighties when, when those were no longer allowed. So that's been identified. Once you have that number, then you actually go physically look at the service connections to determine what those are. And then once we get through that portion of it, we'll have a good understanding of how many service leads will need to be replaced. So I, you know, I, I think we've got somewhere in the eleven to fifteen thousand, somebody help me out, range that we're actually having to physically check? Anyone?
I believe it was just over eight thousand.
Okay.
That needed to be, need to be verified and also to answer, answer your question, remember, Carmon? The, what happens after October 16th is, is still in flux. There's been several interpretations of what might happen. It hasn't actually, the, the gavel hasn't fallen on what the final rule will be as far as what, what has to be done and by whom. But it could, it could potentially be staggering or maybe just a burden, burdensome.
So timeframe and exactly what you have to do once you've identified those still to be determined?
My, my suspicion is the EPA has, is, is looking at the impact overall. Once they get everybody to that, to that point and then assess the impact that would, would have to be, the burden that would have to be carried.
So about eight of our forty thousand connections we have to physically check? And then we'll have it, then we'll know what those materials are and how many we have that are potentially having to be dealt with.
Thank you. And then on the Creekview Shady Crest and the Green Tea Transite Replacement, do we have any additional projects, either drainage or street rehab? So we don't end up in the subdivisions multiple times tearing up rightaways?
So the Shady Crest one is in coordination with the street drainage project. So that'll be two projects under one contract. As far as the Green Tea one, there shouldn't be any disturbance to the actual pavement, cutting any of that pavement out, but that'll be included if that becomes an issue.
Does this pipe bursting?
No, it's, it'll, it's abandoned in place, so it'll be a parallel installation and the existing AC pipe is usually filled in with grout and just left there. That's the simple, standard way to do it.
I know theoretically that shouldn't damage anything, but you're going to have trucks and baccos and everything through all the green tea and the roads aren't great, so I guess let Coza speak to that, but so we don't end up with another.
Right now we have AT&amp;T in the front, just trying to push their lines underneath. It'll create some headaches along with a bridge shutting down here shortly.
So the, the water line is, is pretty light, so it's not like installing like an art, like a reinforced concrete pipe. So it doesn't do as much damage as perhaps maybe some other larger drainage projects would have done.
What's the timing of construction for the Green Tea?
We should be going out for bid in the first quarter of twenty-four.
So it'll be right at, right at the start of the bridge start.
I was trying to think through that.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Kamkar?
Thank you to the staff for putting this together. It's really great information. Can we cycle? I got three questions. Page eight, I guess on the deck presentation. There we go. I guess, I don't know who wants to take this. So how is this position that's been created? This is coming out of the water wastewater fund. This isn't out of the general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you, Trent. What are the KPIs for this individual? How are we going to know? Are we getting the money's worth or not? Some of this stuff is very amorphous, like evaluate safety policies, procedures, training. Is it, nothing bad happens and so they get an A? I, I mean, how are we going to decide? How do we evaluate how good they're doing? I'm assuming nothing breaks and they get an A? I mean, I don't.
No, we're, we're, we're looking at being extremely proactive and identifying key performance indicators that would be measuring lagging or, excuse me.
I mean, could it be as simple as like the TCQ gets the reports or whatever the items? Cause I know we've had issues with that in the past. I'm just, if we create something, we should measure it. What gets measured gets improved. And so I just, we want to hire this person. It's clear we want to. I get that, but.
Well, currently, and just, just as the example you gave is TCQ, they, they, they rest on and begin and end with lagging indicators. We're looking at identifying leading indicators. In, in other words, determining what we can do as staff to help ensure an incident does not occur. So there would be KPIs developed and established based upon industry practice, best practices and how to perform each specific or any specific task safely. And the key performance indicator, leading key performance indicator will be what the, the, the systems and processes put in place to ensure that those policies and practices are being followed.
Is there one of those few key or leading items that maybe you can pull off the top of your head that would, you would probably use in this, for this individual?
One of the things I'll be tasking, tasking them to do is to develop a pre-task plan, an electronic version, a pre-task plan that will go through steps and procedures before taking on the task that rather than, you know, and, and I think right now we do a good, you know, a decent job with tailgate meetings to prepare air folks, but to actually go through an electronic version of a pre-task plan, go through each, each step that we will be facing and identify hazards within each step and mitigation that we will be deploying to ensure the safety of the staff. And completion of those pre-task plans will be a key performance indicator, a leading key performance indicator.
I'm just throwing recommendation out there. Maybe it comes in a memo on a Thursday packet of just what are the goals going to be for this person? I don't know what they are. I'm just, you know, as we add head count, we need to be able to tell are they doing a good job or not? And I have a funny feeling they're going to do a great job, but you need just to have some level of measurement, so. Trent, is this the place where I can ask about the water plant, my three questions? Is this the ideal place to do that?
We answered those.
I know we did, but I just, you know, I, it's my last meeting and I, I would feel like I'm depriving you if I don't get to ask those questions.
If it was your last meeting, if you're here on time, you could have heard staff answer them already. That's the frustrating part. If it was your last meeting, if you're here on time, you could have heard staff answer them already. That's the frustrating part.
If I, if I was on time. Thank you. Thank you.
You were on time.
Thank you, Tony. Always love your comments. Um, can I ask him now?
Sure.
All right. Uh, when are we going to have water running through the, the plant?
Think we're looking at, did we say March?
Yeah, before the end of March.
March. We just got one of our approvals from TCQ we were waiting on. Uh, so now we move to the next stage of that and that puts us on, on schedule for uh, March. We had. Took a little longer to get the first part through TCQ.
Awesome. Uh, how are we doing on the budgeting? How much contingency we have left?
Um, the same amount we had last time we talked about it. So we have not, we have not had any change orders or uh, owner-directed uh, change orders and. Sure.
Good. I'm, I'm actually really excited about that. To be honest with you, that's uh, it's a real achievement for the team considering everything with COVID and all the spending. Coming up that uh, they have kept on that number. I don't know if maybe it's the level of oversight we're doing or whatever it is, but I, I give kudos to the team. Um, lastly.
I think it's the team doing an excellent job.
Could be.
Yeah. Could be, it is.
Yeah. Darren, uh, what are we on the hook for uh, still? Uh, with regards to any overruns or any issues? Since I know it's uh.
They get time. Uh.
Yeah.
There is time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're entitled to time under the contract. That would be the sole remedy. We're not responsible for that unless we directed a change order and changed the scope of the work substantially enough to where it would constitute a, a scope change, and that has not occurred.
Okay, great. Uh, can we go to page twenty-three? Uh. The uh, the plant is one of our biggest capital, I guess, costs. Like in the history of the city, I think to date, I think that'll get eclipsed here soon, but what is the thought on? Are there any proposals or ideas to fulfill this? This slide is really great of where we want to go aspirationally, but are there any? Hard policies, items they're going to do to make this actually happen?
So I think one of the best ways to manage our long-term O and M cost is, is a lot of what we're doing through the CIP with, with the. Uh, scheduled regular rehabilitation of our, our water and sewer infrastructure, which. Uh, I think in the past, we've, we've neglected to some, at, at, at points in time or we deferred maintenance um, due, due to budgetary decisions. Uh, but having a program, as you see in there, where we're rehabbing lift stations, um, when they need to be rehabbed. We are recoating uh, water tanks uh, on a regular schedule when they should be. Um, replacing the piping and pump, uh, pumping uh, in the, in the plants uh, when they should be. Um, then you are not going to have any of uh, potentially any of the catastrophic uh, failures or repairs or things like that that cause. Uh, significant uh, uh, impacts to the system and cost to the system. So. I think a lot of those investments on a regular process lower your, your O and M cost. Um, by having a good operating uh, predictive and maintenance program.
Awesome. Uh, for item number two, the goal, I, I guess not item number two, the, the second sentence. Uh, the goal is to invest wisely as to limit and optimally eliminate the need for additional staffing to operate the system. Can you elaborate on that?
So I think this is talking about the SCADA system specifically. Um, and that particular project, is that what that was pointed towards, that statement? Yes, no?
Yeah, correct, Trent. That was just going into the next slide as far as the investment SCADA system and how it's helped.
Yeah. So I think, you, you know, a lot of this is, is in and around that SCADA system and, and how that does help with your long-term O and M cost. Um. You saw that screen on there. I think it's the next slide. Is it maybe one more? So, you know, that's a real. Uh, shot of our Liberty Water Plant. So that's the kind of information. Uh, we get through the SCADA system where operators can, can uh, uh, do many things um, without having to physically go to the plant at times. Um, and so it just, it, it, it gives you a lot of operational uh, flexibility, a lot of operational capabilities. So I think that, that's what those points were really pointed towards.
Um, and then on the water piece with maintenance and managing long-term M and O, um, we talked in the budget process. I think there was a lot of. I guess kickback, well, there was some kickback, let's put it that way, uh, around the mounting increases on water fees and the rates. And I think we're at thirteen or fourteen percent if I recall. Uh, and I think we had brought up at some point comparing. Keep bringing some of these operators and employees in-house as opposed to a per hour and trying to do a side-by-side to analyze. What would be more accretive to eliminating costs or minimizing them? We made any headway in going in that direction? Or putting that side-by-side together?
So I, I think we presented those numbers a couple of times during different budgets. Um. And we did do some contracting out of operating, operators uh, at a point where we were not near fully staffed. We're in a good place now. Um, we're always, it seems like we're always looking for operators, but we're in a better place now and we don't have any contracted operators at this point. But it, it is much more cu- cost-effective uh, to bring those uh, you know, bring operators in-house and, and have them be our employees.
Uh, and then lastly, page thirty-one, which I guess is a five-year outlook. I, I think it's thirty-one, three-one. Sorry about that. I think we've got a big lump in twenty-twenty-seven. I know we don't have the list in front of us. Do we remember offhand what's that big lump? Generally speaking.
I, I think that's looking at the um, four bay a- at the surface water treatment plant. So there's some potential flexibility there. Isn't that the big number in that year?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Well, I appreciate the effort. Um, on the teams, my last time to ask my favorite questions. This is the driver for what is driving the water rate increases, is spend on water and wastewater. Um, so I, I have a funny feeling there'll be more sensitivity in the days to come and uh, I look forward to watching that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Go ahead. Just, we'll just go down the.
I feel so lucky. Trent, uh, question about uh, when we get the, the customer portal up with AMI, we, I previously asked questions about um. And I know with the, the new meters, we anticipated actually more accurate readings. Uh, once the, the smart meters were installed, so we were anticipating, I guess, slightly higher usage because I guess we were maybe under. Tracking previously with the old mechanical meters. Is that, have we seen that? Do we know that that's the case?
I don't know that we have a good means of measuring that, but I would, I would say that that's occurred. I mean, that's occurred. We've had the new meters in the ground for a couple of years now. So, yes.
And, and so when we get, I, I'm just trying to anticipate that if people are able to better, I guess, in not. Real time, but close to real time, uh, view of what their water usage is and they can adjust. And we do see a reduction, as I asked previously. Um, if we have a reduction in usage because people are able to monitor their usage. And that obviously increases, I mean, excuse me, decreases the amount of potential revenue. Do we, do we know what that plan is kind of? Long-term to, to smoothen out increases that we might have to make to the rate. Um, have we? Prepared for that? Cause I know I'd asked that question previously. Um, I don't know if we've really talked about that since.
I guess, is the question, you know, if we see a modification in behavior because people have more data as to how much water they're using? How do we deal with the? Loss of revenue?
Yeah. Cause A, the question I asked previously was if, if we're pushing out information, if it was more of a communication-based thing, right? So we were telling people conserve water and then they actually conserve water. And now we've got, you know, less revenue coming into the.
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
Do, I mean, do we even anticipate that? Has that been part of the conversation?
I wouldn't guess and I haven't heard of anyone else's.
Up here, we've lost our slides up there, so I'm not sure.
I, I would guess, and I haven't heard of any other cities uh, that have implemented AMI that have had that kind of behavioral change just because of. The uh, ability to monitor that. I think what you, what you see there is um, maybe people that have leaks. Or have some sort of uh, you know, their, their irrigation system, you know, somehow gets programmed and it's running every night for four hours. They're going to be able to get alerts earlier and then stop that kind of usage. I don't know that it'll modify a whole lot of overall behavior. I think. I think where I've heard of cities that have seen greater modifications of overall behaviors or cities that have been in drought. You know, for multiple years and under severe restrictions for multiple, multiple years. When they come out of those, they don't ever see it rebound quite to where it was.
So let me, let me help uh, a little bit on this. Um, because staff has been in the background preparing WaterSmart and taking a look at it. So I was actually over in UB. Uh, last week, I think it was Thursday. Um, and I, I saw a presentation on my account.
Hmm.
For WaterSmart.
And now you take shorter showers?
Well, no, it's not that. It, it's, it's, I said, man, I hope I've paid my bill, you know? And uh, and I had a four hundred dollar bill. And I'm like, wait, something, huh? Water bill? Yeah. And uh, now for anybody out there, I didn't go to social media and complain. So I actually, we took a look at WaterSmart. So to your point, we walked all the way through it and, and there is a leak indicators. Because there was continuous use in my home. So uh, that's part of what the WaterSmart system is supposed to. Obviously, it's not. Active and live in an app yet where I've set parameters to tell me X number of gallons in a day or anything like that. But taking a look at it, and this was, it's about twenty-four hours, I guess, behind. So as far as real time is concerned, it's real time less twenty-four hours. Okay? So uh, yeah, looking at it and, and I still had my irrigation system. Typically, I would turn my irrigation system off sometime in November. I've just lagged. Um, and I said, hey, go look at on a week basis and you can see the two days, my garbage days, Monday and Thursday. Boom, there they are. Um, so it was, it was an eye-opener because the system itself was saying you have continuous use inside the home. You need to go and look and you could even click on certain icons like what? Where could I go and look? Where could I go? And sure enough, I've got a, a toilet upstairs that the flapper is not completely, you know? So it gave me the opportunity to go, you know, fix that. Um, and so, yeah, so four hundred dollar water bill. The mayor gets a four hundred dollar water bill when he has a leak.
And I guess the reason I asked that is, so I recently switched electric companies. When I say recently, I guess a year ago now. And they, they give you daily updates. And so it is now my mission in life to have my week over week usage down. I don't know how I still like have lights turned on. And, you know, cause I'm just like every, every week, it's like I have to be lower than the week before. So my neurosy sometimes spills over into my, my uh. You know, anticipation of others' behaviors. So that's why I'm asking if, if we do see, you know, a, a decrease, I guess, just asking if we've kind of planned for, for that and, and forecasting and trying to figure out a way to again, keep those increases smooth.
Well, and also to your point, um, I've, I've got an older, I've got an older irrigation system that is, is more manual. But newer irrigation systems, for example, if you have a power surge, it will reset your settings to factory default. Okay? So, which a factory default might be every day.
Yeah, all the time.
Okay? Um, and, and, and people aren't aware of that because it's coming on at four AM. It's off before they even know. The next thing they get this bill and it's, it's huge. You're at the point of WaterSmart, if they're on it and they get it, then they can go back and see, why am I having this time use? Oh, I, I need to go look at this. And um, uh, so again, I think it's going to be a great tool. I don't know how much, to your point, I don't know how much it will modify behavior. But bring people's awareness when there is an issue in the home.
Yeah, and Trent mentioned, I guess, some of the other cities that have already implemented, you know, this. And so I guess you're saying that you haven't seen. I guess, talking to some of our peers that this hasn't been an issue.
It, it hasn't been an issue that I've heard of. I mean, it, it could be there, but I think it's probably, it's minimal enough. It's just kind of noise and the overall usage. All right. All right. That's it. I appreciate it.
It's Kate.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um. It was a good presentation. Thank y'all so much for um, all your hard work. I wanted to ask you something on slide number thirty-four. There were three places listed, Liberty, Woodcreek and Cullen for the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-three. Are those all started?
So those are designed. So Cullen, um, yeah, they're, they're all in negotiations or will be presenting the design to council here shortly.
Okay. What is the goal for those to be?
Um. A design like these usually take about a year. And the construction uh, for Woodcreek would probably be six months of construction, eight months.
And. And um, I have one really weird question. Is um, does the transite water pipe, does it lend itself to the sediment we see sometimes? Will that be gone with new?
So the, some of the sediment, uh, what I was talking about, the uh, the dead-end lines and the circulation. So that is, that's getting the water moving better and you'll, it will hopefully alleviate some of that. But um, I would rely on my utilities peers to talk about sediment and lines. If Mr. Kent has anything to add.
So the installation of the PVC piping uh, would help with the settlement in itself and as well as um. Flushing ability that we're talking about having out there in the neighborhood.
All right. Thank y'all.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I really appreciate the presentation tonight. Um, I just have a, a couple of questions revolving around uh, water and future water. Capacity. Um, and, and if you touched on it, I apologize, I, I just missed it. Um, so we, we're in a drought situation or have been for most of, most of the year. So far, have we done any kind of analysis on what our water table looks like at our wells that we currently have?
Is, is Julian here? Is he not here tonight?
He had a family emergency.
I think our best person to maybe help answer that unless David's got something to add, uh, it wasn't able to join us tonight. Um.
No, uh, the, the, I, I can't give you any specific results, but I do know that we, we monitor the drawdown and recovery time for, for the wells a- and the aquifers. Uh, I, I couldn't answer to any levels what they are or where they have been or where they're trending. Uh. But all indications are we're stand, holding well uh, with, with where, where they have been historically.
Okay. I guess you hit, kind of hit on what I was getting after where the tr- was the trend. You know, what is it that our water table looks like during a drought condition uh, currently? And um, I mean, obviously in a drought condition, our, our surface water is going to be depleted, right? Or at least a lot less in volume, right? When, in a drought condition. When we were, when we, when we rely on a surface water treatment facility, we could expect that. That plant to have a lower capacity at that time. I mean, am I, am I off-base in thinking that?
Well.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna, gonna say that uh, the particular, uh, the Brazos River Basin that we'll be drawing from that feeds America's canal is, is uh. Uh, the Gulf Coast Water Authority owns and operates that and they have very senior rights to the Brazos. And many, many acre feet of uh, what they call backup water. Uh, essentially all the dams and reservoirs above us, uh, that, that uh, water can be released and feed the Brazos. Uh, the, the, the river run rights are, are far superior and, and uh, very senior to most water rights uh, along the Brazos. And having those reserves and the release ability from the reservoirs to, to feed the river run. Uh, is actually greater than, than uh, any, any uh, uh, groundwater source that you may have. It, it's, it's, it's just, it's a very strong water system that we're tapping into with the surface water plant.
So the Gulf Coast, yeah, for our surface water plant is, is uh, good, solid. We should, except in the most extreme of droughts, uh, be solid there. I think our most, our biggest vulnerability on surface water is the City of Houston connection out on, and on the west side of town, which you heard in the presentation. Uh, during the drought this summer, uh, when Houston's dealing with main breaks and peak, peak usage, it's the thing, at the same time we are. We're not able to get six MGD out of that take point. Some days we were, uh, you know, for the month, we averaged about four, even though we could have taken six. Um, they just don't have the capacity um, there as well. So that, that's probably, I'd say, more vulnerable than our supply for our, our surface water plant itself. But then on the east side, our connection out of the southeast water plant for the Houston ru- uh, main uh, operates that we take at the Alice Street, that ten MGD. That's always been solid. We've been able to take ten plus sometimes.
I guess since it's coming from Houston, we, we need to also kind of understand their drawdown as well then if we're gonna. If we're gonna try to figure out if we're gonna be able to sell water from the west, the surface water treatment facility and uh, that, that's coming online early next year. That's my only question, I guess.
Yeah, and I, I think if we got into a situation where we were a wholesale provider, we would probably be looking at uh, producing, you know, expanding the plant and producing uh, into our. Additional ten million gallons a day out of the, out of the Brazos that we were not using yet.
So Trent, um, you kind of said it a little bit at the end. You said the new treatment plant can't produce 10 million. If we wanted to go to 10 million, we would have expended?
No, this first phase will produce 10. Uh, we have another 10, so we have 10 million gallons that will, we can produce with this phase. We have an additional 10 million gallons in water rights out of the Brazos. So that plant can be expanded to 20 million gallons a day.
And I know in the past, this conversations happened, maybe I need to be educated. I guess, you know, when, when, when we're, I echo Councilmember Cam Carr's concern. With the rates increasing and we have this extra capacity, uh, you know, when I was just doing simple math, I guess 28 mil, uh, 28 million was the daily, uh, peak for water usage on August 28th, I think, um, you said. Or someone, uh, said, and then I guess we have capacity of 44 million gallons now that with the new plant coming online in March of 2024. So I guess what's the, uh, what's the plan? I mean, is there a way we can make revenue off this to kind of bring the cost down or spread that cost?
Sure. So maybe, maybe to put a little bit of those numbers in perspective. So this, this last summer, when we peaked at that 28 MGD, uh, we did have two of our, uh, wells down. So I think our capacity at the time was about 30. Um, and we had, and, and because we couldn't get six out of City Houston connection, we had days where we couldn't recover overnight, um, with our production as to what was used the previous day. So we were seeing our, our tank capacity diminish over, over, um, over day over day. And that's when we implemented our, our, uh, restrictions. So that was kind of the, the metrics we were looking at on a, on a weekly and daily basis to determine whether or not to go into that. So, so yes, so now we've got, we'll have those wells coming back online. Um, and that was the Bailey and the Magnolia wells. And then, uh, adding the 10 MGD, uh, from, for the surface water plant, we do, we're up to that 44. Um, but you know, we continue to grow. We continue to have more usage every year. And so, um, you know, our initial, uh, modeling shows we won't need all of that 10. Um, but as we rehab different wells and things like that, you know, we'll dip into that. So, um, we're updating, um, we're working on updating the model right now as well, which kind of takes another look at. So when you, when you break it down into what capacity do you need for the TCUQ, it's based on your, your average day demand and your max day demands and things like that. And you have to have a certain amount of capacity over your max day demands. And you have to have a certain amount of stored water capacity as well. So those are all the things that go into looking at that. So, um, will we have additional capacity initially when we start to plan up? Yes. Is, is most of the capacity in this first phase of the plant, something we'll need ultimately? Yes. So going into, you know, a long-term agreement with another, say municipal user of water, um, they're going to want something that's solid and good for the long-term, not something that we say, hey, well, we'll have a little extra capacity for the next 10 years. We'll sell you that and then it goes away. Um, so there's opportunities, but it's probably dealing more with that additional 10 million gallons a day that we have. And so we've had discussions with other communities over the years. Uh, we are actually going to have some more coming up here very soon. Um, but that, that is one of the, the things we're looking at is, is what do we do long-term and what are, what are their needs? And then how can, um, that maybe all fit together where we're a regional provider that helps pay, you know, share some of the cost of, of the, uh, uh, the operation and maintenance and, and even capital costs moving forward if we do expand the plant.
Good question though. I think, uh, we'll have this discussion often, especially water is going to be one of those resources that every city in the area is going to have a hard time. And especially surface water. It's just a matter of time before, uh, this Northern Missouri County area becomes a subsidence district altogether and you're not allowed to drill a well. Uh, so just, you know, the, the three counties around us, Fort Ben, Harris and Galveston are all in subsidence districts. And so it's just a matter of time before we have that. And the fact that we've got some long-term surface water treatment plant is a good thing. It is expensive. Uh, pretty hard to, uh, you know, to manage through that, but, uh, but good that we've got it. Uh, real quick, uh, go to page 36 of the slide deck real quick. I think here, yeah. So just kind of want to highlight that, uh, this, when you see this construction budget on the end, uh, added up, there's probably, I didn't add it up. So there's probably $12 million-ish of 10 to 12 million dollars worth of, of construction budget in there, all in 23 and 24. And it, it goes to the rate model that we put together. So when we do the rate model, uh, Trent, I'm, I'm assuming our current rate model has all of these projects factored into it. Whether we're paying cash for something, uh, like a smaller one, and I don't know if we are or not, like the County Road 100, uh, water line, hard use, you know, parallel insights 375. I don't know if that's cash. I don't know if that's debt. But just off the top here, but all of that goes into the, uh, rate model, correct?
Yes, sir. It does.
Okay. So with, even without having, um, a new well, you know, or a new, uh, plant coming online and that incredible expense, some of the wastewater, which we're going to get to here in just a minute, some of those expenses coming down the line, rehabilitation, replacement, repair, large, large capital expense, ripping up these old transite pipes and, or not ripping them up, but replacing those transite pipes. And, and that expense, I mean, 5.6 million to do green tea by itself. I mean, that is an expense to the water and sewer side, which is going to drive rates, even with, even without having large capital expense and a plant. Um, so some of that is still, um, going to be driving some rates. Obviously, the biggest, the biggest driver right now are the plant activities that we have going on. Uh, I think you answered the question on 25. This is kind of getting around to like SCADA. Long-term SCADA will help us. Ask the question, will, will SCADA long-term help us, um, monitor or keep control of future, uh, uh, FTEs for people? Is that how we, we pay for this? So make sure that we don't have tons and tons of people working for us?
The short answer, Mayor, is, is, is yes. The, the intent is to reduce, if not eliminate, the need for additional staff for the newer facilities that we had, we're able to leverage SCADA to prevent having to add staff.
Which is, which I think is important to just to make sure that we are making investments today. We, we may or may, we'll, we'll see them, we'll see the benefits that over time. You may not see it directly because it's, it may offset what we see as a future increase because we have to, we, we're able to maybe not have that much of an increase because it's, it's helping on people. But we'll, we'll feel it and see it over time. Uh, and I want to talk about 14 real quick. Since we're talking about water, um, and, and I think the slides right behind it where it talks about where the water's coming in and, and, and dependence on, uh, slide 14 and 15. So we've had lots of people have said, and we've had, ask council members say here, that once we get this new, you know, shiny plant up on board, we don't have the need for the City of Houston anymore. And that was why we're doing this new plant. I want to make it abundantly clear that we're doing the new plant for a different reason than that. We've never said we were going to wean ourselves completely off the City of Houston. Uh, we have said, because the 10 million gallons a day that comes into the Alice Streets, uh, the Alice Street plant, we're an actual equity owner in the Southeast Water Plant in City of Houston. We're not just buying water. We, we helped pay for the capital improvements to that plant 15, 18 years ago. Uh, I remember swallowing real hard that night when we, $40 million purchase that night was the biggest purchase in the history of the city at that point. You know, approving $40 million to go do that. So, you know, that, that, that's water that we have invested in the capital improvement of that plant. We get to the 6 million gallons over in Shadow Creek. Someone correct me, 1.6 or 1?
It's 1.3.
1.3 is the take.
Take or pay.
It's the take or pay. And then anything over that, we have a, a premium on. So I can see over time that we cut that premium. This plant down here, it was really started and implemented, uh, for just future growth of our city and our region. Um, as well as, keep in mind, a lot of the planning efforts were well before the annexation rules and laws changed. Um, you know, at the state legislature. And so, you know, the goal that was put together probably 20 years ago was to have a third of our water, you know, come from City of Houston, a third coming from wells and about a third coming from, um, uh, surface water. So, uh, this, this 16, 17 and 10 doesn't quite do a third, a third, a third. But if we bring on another 10 over time, then that, that's kind of where you can see the goal has been put together. This has been talked about for 20 and 30 years, not just in the last several years. Timing of it certainly becomes real critical, uh, as we move forward. So I wanted to make it abundantly clear. Just the fact that we're bringing this plan on doesn't mean that we're going to suddenly turn the valve off to the City of Houston. Um, you know, we hope to lessen out on the, on the west end by not having, uh, to do that, that premium amount. Uh, but days, if we need it, we'll have it, we'll have access to it. And that's the good thing. Uh, we've become a little bit more flexible on water. We've become a, a lot more self-sufficient for water and not as, uh, relying on the City of Houston. The City of Houston is going to be in our future. Um, and in fact, and I dare say the 10 million that we get from the City of Houston in Alice is probably way cheaper than most of the water that we would create right now out of this new plant, just because this plant cost is.
Very, very cost effective. When, when we bought into the 10 MGD there, the, there are, uh, yeah, our equity costs there were much, much, uh, less than today's cost because it was 15 years ago.
And we're probably getting close to paying those bonds.
Yeah. I, I think, I think for the expansion of their plant, it was somewhere around 27 million. And then the other 13 or so was to get the water line here and make the improvements at the Alice plant. So I remember, uh, when we carried that $27 million check over to Houston. I let somebody else do it. I didn't want that.
Remember voting on it. I'm like, okay, we gotta do this. That was, uh, that was, that was a tough night, but we did it. So. Remember Cam Carr?
Well, quickly, uh, I wanted to dovetail off some of the items around the, uh, the system that we're using that are identifying the, the leaks in the main service. I had a neighbor who literally Saturday night had a leak and it's Sunday morning at like 4:00 PM or AM, somebody came, turned off the water because it tripped and you could see the truck out there. And then the truck came out and the people didn't know what the heck happened at 7:00 AM. But they really appreciated that. And so I, I just think that that's been a tremendous success of our system working to catch that ahead of time as opposed to weeks into it.
Right. Absolutely. Good deal. Good deal. All right. Uh, move on.
I think we're going to jump right back in with, uh, Mr. Kent on the collection system.
Thank you, Trent. Now I'd like to, uh, share some of the highlights related to our collection side of the distribution and collections division. This team is comprised of several services ranging from cleaning and televising the sanitary sewer lines to manhole inspections for deterioration and sinkhole investigations. Within the city, there's 467 miles of sanitary sewer line and 10,899 manholes, which provide many opportunities to allow inflow and infiltration into our system for treatment. In major rain events, this INI often leads to surcharge systems, sewer backup, increased treatment and sanitary sewer overflows. Within the Berry Rose Basin, a robust program for INI has been kicked off. Studies of the system with flow monitoring to smoke testing, as well as televising the line to identify any deficiencies within the system. Inflow is designed, uh, defined as surface water that enters the wastewater system from open cleanouts, yard drains, cross connections with storm sewers and through manhole lids and covers. Infiltration, on the other hand, is an excessive water that seeps, trickles or flows into older damaged sanitary sewer from its, uh, surrounding soils. In closing, several areas of consideration to improve or expand our services as we advance through the next year include leveraging the CIP process to reduce inflow and infiltration, further a manhole rehabilitation program, leverage contractual repair services such as pipe bursting and install sewer, sanitary sewer cleanouts at the right of way to reduce investigation time, staff resources and services on private property. With that, thank you again. I'd like to turn it over to our wastewater treatment division. Please announce Roy Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, the wastewater reclamation facility are divided into five basins, Reflection Bay, South Down, John Hargrove, Berry Rose and Longwood. Wastewater, the wastewater division treats between 3.4 and 3.9 billion gallons of wastewater annually and collectively permitted to treat 16.55 million gallons a day. Currently, four of the five facilities are at near or, or their full capacities. As we face, uh, difficult decisions on what was best for the city's sustainable future, a movement was made to reduce the amount of rehabilitation projects and long-term O and M caused by combining facilities where it made sense. The J-HAB project. With the, the rehab of J-HAB nearing completion, which is currently at 89% complete of value with construction with it, an estimated substantial completion date of April 2024. June of 2022, the city finalized an eight-month study to confirm the intent, intended location of the plant and the broad, uh, scope, which includes, uh, the capacity and the process technology. This plan was presented to council and staff received consensus of the desired path moving forward. With the anticipation of, uh, pre-procurement of the major process equipment and early works packages, uh, which include SBR, intention upon construction, uh, trailer site work, uh, to get started in the first half of 2024 and the balance of the plant to get started in the second half of 2024, including the force main from Longwood to Berry Rose. Although the force main is not, and on the critical path and could start later if needed and still, and can still meet schedule. Construction is anticipated to be substantially completed at the end of 2027. Future wastewater systems after Berry Rose expansion and Longwood, uh, decommissioning will transfer the flows currently being treated at Longwood to the expanded Berry Rose plant. This combining of, of flows to a single treatment facility will allow the, the, uh, redeployment of staff to areas such as asset reliability activities. The wastewater division also includes the lift stations teams who oversee 68 wastewater lift stations and storm water lift stations. The lift stations team monitor and maintains the functionality of all the lift stations and ensuring well levels are optimum. Team is also being, been essential in assisting in collection systems and wastewater facilities as needed. Team is responsive in isolating lift stations at times of managing sewer overflows and lending a helping hand at the treatment plants or repairs and maintenance on, to the onsite lift stations. At this time, uh, I will now turn the presentation back over to Mr. Jameson.
Thank you, Roy. Okay. So coming up, we'll showcase a few slides to discuss some of the wastewater projects that we've put into operation in the past few years, as well as some that are nearing completion and projects that we're looking to begin. Uh, as you can see here, the, the five-year CIP is heavily geared towards expenditures at the front end. Um, that is the Berry Rose expansion and the Longwood decommissioning primarily. Uh, some of the other projects include lift station rehab, sanitary sewer rehab projects, um, that we, that we use to eliminate the INI in our different basins. Here you see a list of wastewater project accomplishments from 2018 to 2023. The bolded lines are some of the projects that have been completed with, uh, in the last year. Uh, some of these other projects, uh, completed were adding depth and upsizing the diameter of the piping. So this this allows for consolidating our lift station network, which reduces the cost related to labor, uh material and energy. And in the last decade, the city has removed more than 10 lift stations from our system and has brought other lift stations back uh into current standards through these rehab projects. So a few few of the major wastewater project completions this year include uh Willow Crest subdivision sanitary sewer. This was a pipe bursting project uh as well as the Bailey sewer line and lift station. Uh we also plan to complete the J H A C water reclamation facility expansion and this will uh greatly increase the treatment capacity for the city. Uh this list entails projects that we have design contracts underway or or in negotiation uh by the end of the end of the current fiscal year or uh the largest being the Berry Rose Gravity Sewer at 1.2 million. Uh the Shady Crest and Creekview sanitary sewer rehab, Riverstone Ranch regional lift station capacity expansion and the sanitary sewer rehab at Longwood. Uh so these news projects are in early stages of consultant selection or design. So one of the ones I just mentioned was the Berry Rose Gravity Sewer Project, uh which will replace the undersized trunk wastewater main uh with the size required. Uh that was dictated by the the wastewater master plan. Uh the project will replace the line in in Plumb from Galveston to Berry Rose uh in addition to the main truck in Berry Rose to the uh to the wastewater treatment plant. Uh the project includes 7,600 linear feet and rehab of the associated manholes. Uh the completion of this project will improve the collection system capacity and will uh remediate the surcharges that that we can see in the sanitary line. Uh so the South Down Regional Lift Station in Force Main. So this project is a a long-term redirection and a consolidation effort. Uh similar to the the Berry Rose Longwood project. This one is to convert the existing uh treatment plant out at South Down, uh convert into a lift station and then construct approximately 12,000 feet of 16-inch force main around uh along McCarr to direct the flows to the uh Reflection Bay uh water reclamation facility. So this will eliminate the South Down plant and a need for a future expansion at that plant. So the current Reflection Bay expansion or the one that we completed earlier uh 2019, 2018 uh includes the capacity to allow for the abandonment of the South Down plant. And this also meets T C Q's goal of regionalization of the wastewater treatment facilities. So the current C I P has eight upcoming construction contracts for wastewater ranging from 270 K to 194 million. Uh the highest budgeted expense uh being the Berry Rose and the Longwood projects. In addition to these, we have uh several uh rehab of multiple lift stations throughout the city. So the city's wastewater master plan identified a lot of the areas with high I N I through our flow monitoring. Uh and this portion of the the I N I program will address uh the rehab of the failing sanitary sewer collection system over 30 years of age in the following basis for a period of years to come. So the Berry Rose and John Hargrove uh reclamation facilities have areas in the sanitary sewer basins that have reached an age where the I I I has increased the flows at critical areas like to the lift stations and treatment plants. Uh so these projects, uh there is approximately seven miles of sewer line and associated manholes that'll be evaluated uh determine I N I in the areas and what we need to get in and repair replace. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Epperson for any questions we may have.
Thank you, Jameson, and everyone else for presenting. Great job and appreciate all the time and effort that went into to putting this together tonight. From everyone that presented and then everyone else who who was involved in putting it together. Um I do want to point out real quick on the sanitary sewer side of things, those rehab projects uh that address I N I extremely important. Um when we first looked at the Berry Rose Basin and bringing Longwood there, um I believe the the plant we're building is a is 5 million gallons a day. Um and when we first looked at the flows into Berry Rose and Longwood with all the I N I we have, uh the recommendation was to build a much larger plant somewhere in the seven to eight million gallons uh uh per day uh plant size. And we said, you know what, we need to really hit that area hard with I N I projects, bring that way down and then we can build a a smaller plant. So to kind of put that in perspective, um between the two basins, Berry Rose and Longwood basins over the next uh within the five-year C I P, we've got about uh $21 million of I N I work planned. Um that eliminates, even if it eliminated only two M G D of expansion of that plant, that would that's spending 21 uh to avoid the cost of about 78 million if you were to add two more million gallon capacity to that plant. So um you know, I know we ran through that, I think, last time we talked about this, but just wanted to point that out again that those rehab projects are very important and very cost effective uh compared to dealing with that at the plants. Um and you have to deal with it in your in your lift stations as well. And uh you know, on sanitary sewer side, much like the the water side, you're seeing lots of these rehab projects uh to make sure we keep this in our our important infrastructure um in good working order, making sure we're rehabbing things in a a regular timely basis uh at these lift stations uh much like the water plants so that they, you know, don't get to a critical failure point before we address those type of things. So with that, uh we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, real quick, I I just have a quick question uh on uh slide 48. This is the, I guess it's a artist rendering of what the plant's gonna look like aerially. Um and I, this is obviously, it's a it's an artist rendering. I just wanted to make sure what are we doing aesthetically from Pearland Parkway to be prepared for that? I know uh J H A C has, you know, berms and trees and those types of things along the roadway. Just wondering what we're doing for um you know, to to not hide it, but dress it up along the roadway that is Pearland Parkway that's um uh adjacent to right there. So uh not necessarily looking for an answer tonight, but just wondering, making sure that our plan long term that we dress that up similar to what we've got J H A C over or if there's something better, you know, it'd be nice. It's in the corridor overlay zone, just like McCarr or just like uh J H A C was. So I just want to make sure that we're planning for that uh along the way. Don't know if anybody has an answer for that.
So part of um going through the permit process, design process, community development does have some standards. Um I think one of the things is probably some screening, uh landscaping and um a concrete wall.
Okay, there is just, I mean, there are uh plants out there that get higher than six and eight feet. There are plants that get upwards of 12 and 15 feet. Uh it might be a lot more cost effective in screening it than a concrete wall at six foot or eight foot. Uh so just things like that that we might wanna, you know, look at that could actually be a good screening along the way.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just really quickly, I only want to dovetail on that point because this is a great diagram. Um when we're doing large-scale facilities in some of these developments, um we end up building a water plant. Now we're not dealing to the size and the scale, but you you have these houses that are like maybe 20, 22 feet, 24 feet. Then you've got this gigantic plant that might be topping out at, you know, 30, 35 feet and they're all in close proximity because you put a water plant or wastewater plant. You know, you're tucking them in. Um one of the things that we found in in talking with my mentor and others, and this is gonna sound odd, is painted brown. It seems to blend versus the sky because the the taupe taupe is not a natural color in nature. It's green, brown or or something of that derivation. And so the brown, for whatever reason, blends, especially if you put some kind of fencing or you're putting natural vegetation, it blends a little better. I'm not saying that's the answer because you want to put the logo on there, but like on this large round facility and some of the other ones that are facing the road, a a lighter brown, a darker brown, for whatever reason, it does sound like it would blend. It is not as noticeable when you're driving at speed.
On a basis, right.
For whatever reason, um so that would be the only offering. Uh you know, you can't necessarily do that on a water plant tower that's, you know, 50 feet in the air. Um but for something that is roadside, for whatever reason, that's been a best practice in our space. Now, yard facilities are bigger than a residential facility, but just food for thought.
Open up for questions, Mr. Kent, uh Mr. Coza.
Thank you, Mayor. Um Trent, just to understand correctly on the uh Berry Rose, are you saying, I remember the $8 million, I mean, the 8 million figure um gallons per day. Um are you saying that we're gonna have a smaller plant? Is that what you were saying there at the end?
Yes, sir. So I think when we originally studied that, it was somewhere in that 8 million range. And once we went through optimizing the plant, um showing that we are going to do the I N I work, uh we were able to bring that down. And what's going to be built with this phase of the plant is a 5 million gallon a day plant.
Okay, and so this number right here on the construction budget, when we originally talked, uh when we had Freeze and Nichols here give us the uh presentation on it, I think it was like 250 million to 260 million roughly on this. Um I'm sure that was design, other things, this 224, if you want to call it that. Um what are we looking at total budget rejection on on this project shutting down Longwood?
So I believe our our total budget um is still based upon that Freeze Nichols study. So once you add all the engineering F F and E and all those different things in there, it's, we're still roughly in the same ballpark. Is that correct, Jameson?
Right, so we're at 238 right now, but we're getting, we're doing V E right now uh with the contractor and the consultant and the owner to get down to 230 before we uh go out for bid. 230 was our but our 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 goal, our budget number, so we're getting down to that.
That's between the two projects.
It's both projects, yes.
And this is just the Berry, is the 223 here just the Berry Rose amount, I think? Maybe.
Yeah, it should be combined. The 230 is a combined number. I think 194 was the Berry Rose number.
You're right, it was 194 and.
Yeah, that's what the one slide, it had 195 and 29, I think, is what one slide had.
So yeah, we're still operating under those same estimates and and like Jameson said, we've gotten some of the uh, you know, 30% design, somewhere between 30 and 60% design early estimates, and so we're trying to bring some of those costs down right now. Just keep within that.
We're still looking at the 250, but it could be less.
Yeah, and I I it I would expect it for construction itself to be less uh and and closer near the budget. Um you know, we did, we do have uh in the budget some contingency if there was any inflation that impacted us beyond what was expected, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my mind what we're looking at.
So no, I think I think right now, overall budget-wise, we we don't feel good where we are.
Yeah, so we're gonna get uh around 230 when we we take the next step. And that includes uh seven and a half percent contingency from the C M R on the total number. So once that goes into construction, that'll go down quite a bit. So Trent's correct, there is cushion in there.
And we'll start seeing actual numbers here. Um you know, first first half of 2024, we'll see our first early works package on equipment and some of the some of the work and and then balance of the plant beyond that.
Okay, as far as, I mean, on the this plant probably services the majority of the east end of Pearland. Uh as far as any, what little growth we do have on property and whatnot, that 5 million, is it gonna be able to handle? You know, whatever little bit of property we have left to develop.
I think that the study contemplated the potential for a, was it a one M G D expansion in the future if needed?
Uh there is a one, so this plan is gonna be five M G D and there is a one uh one M G D expansion that we talked about for, I think, around 2035.
I was just curious.
Yeah, that that contemplates, you know, some some build out of uh the the small remaining areas and potentially some redevelopment in some of the other areas.
So we we didn't go ahead and build the six because we have all this I N I. So we could have built the six, but the thought was to let's see how the the five operates and maybe perhaps we don't need it. We don't, we're not positive, so that that was the strategy there.
Okay, I was just curious, just gonna see.
I think that's, I think that's a good move. We need to, we need to correct the I N I anyway.
Right.
The sooner we can get that done. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Um any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I had one. On on this, on this picture that we're seeing here, there's how a house, a pool in the lower corner. Is that accurate? Is it this close to residential?
It's right across the.
So that's that's Pearland Parkway, I think the right away there.
It's that.
Yeah, so the right away there is 150 feet or so and you know, there's a, you know, there's some buffer on our side as well. So I mean, yeah, generally, that's about how close.
There's a 30 foot there, that's 30 foot.
So now for the second part of the question.
Oh, the second part was, were they drunk when they built that curvy sidewalk? I'm just kidding, that's for, yeah, aesthetic purposes. No, we looked up uh synonyms for um stuff that goes into these plants and I learned a new word, egesta. And with the egesta that will be going into this plant, um will there be with the new technologies that it, once J H A C is complete and this, where there'll be uh significant odor mitigation compared to what there is now?
So odor control is on the table for V E. Um but the plan is to install the odor control with the plant.
Okay. That's that's the second part of the question. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Not seeing any. Then we are uh gonna wrap up, go back to staff. Is there any uh, was this, that was the final, wasn't it?
That was it, I believe. Good, and uh but we really appreciate your time, extra time uh to to talk about these important projects. Um because these discussions obviously inform our C I P budgeting every year and uh you know, look forward to being back here in a a few months with the next uh iteration.
And you did mention, uh when when should we expect our works package on Berry Rose?
First quarter or close?
Um around April, so the documents are, go out for bid in January with McCarthy. Um and that, we're expecting like April 22nd to bring to y'all.
That'd be very good. I think um, you know, as we've got two new council members, we'll be onboarding here in another week. Um and starting that process, I think a a big download of of this plant and everything that's been involved will be uh very important, especially with, you know, here in their first, you know, five months, they're gonna be seeing early works package on something that we've been talking about for a while, so just making sure that they're up to speed on that. So I think that'd be good. All right, with that, uh we will um move to adjournment of this uh special meeting, C I P update series at 5:41.